All right, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education organizational meeting, Monday, January 11th, 2016. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haberman.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
Mrs. Oakes.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Mrs. Stark. Here.
Sorry. All right, you all, please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, moving on, I'll come off, there's three of us in this room.
Please, right man. Ladies and gentlemen, we swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the state of Ohio and will be faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharged to be a school board member of the Vermillion Public School District to which you have been elected.
All right, moving on to election of officers. Start with a resolution, I'd like to nominate Chris Haberman for president of the board.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for president of the board? And one more time, any other nominations for president of the school board? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Oakes?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
I abstain.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Move on.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is nominations for board vice president. I'd like to nominate Shelley Ennis for board vice president.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for board vice president? One last time, any other nominations for board vice president? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
I say yes, we're abstaining, yes.
Miss Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item, standing resolutions. The resolution to approve the following standing resolutions. Can we, a resolution to approve the following standing resolutions for 2016. Do we have to read them all, or can we go as written?
I don't go as written. What do you think, Phil?
There you can.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll say numbers one through 10 as written. Number 11, appoint Jeff Keck to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Rec Board for 2016. Number 12, appoint Michael Stark to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2016. Number 13, to appoint Sarah Stepp to serve as the student liaison, student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2016. Number 14, authorize the participation in state and federal programs as they become available. Number 15, approve alternative tax budget for fiscal year 2017. And number 16, appoint the following firms as legal counsel. Bricker &amp; Eckler, LLP, NS Britain Company, LPA, Smith, Peters &amp; Coil, LPA, McGowan &amp; Markling Company, LPA, Springer &amp; Nathanson, PLL, Attorneys at Law, Squire, Patton &amp; Boggs, LLP, Walter, Hammerfield, LLP. I'll move.
Second.
Any other discussions, questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Oakes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Sure. Just a point of clarification for people in the audience as to why there's so many attorneys. There's different specializations and so we don't want the community to think that we have all of these attorneys that are doing all this work. We do, but there are first specializations, like special education is a specialty that we need to hire an attorney for. And property tax would be another specialization, so not one attorney will do all things. So that's the reason why that there's so many different attorneys that are appointed to the board.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a resolution to adjourn the organizational meeting.
I'll move.
Second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Oakes?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Regular Vermillion Local School District Board meeting of January 11th. Suzanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Haberman?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mrs. Oakes?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Okay, so in order, we're gonna have some students come up to be recognized.
These are our citizens of the month from the elementary school. They're gonna talk to us and then they'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? What's your name?
Helen, second.
What grade are you in?
Second grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Duster.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
An athlete.
Nice. Go to the end of the line. What's your name, buddy? Talk to the microphone.
Ashton.
What grade are you in?
First grade. Mrs. Looks?
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Dolphin trainer.
That's good. Good job. What's your name?
Evan.
Evan, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Stainbrook.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
NBA player.
Nice, you're pretty tall, I bet you'll be good. Who's next? What's your name?
Violet.
What grade are you in?
First grade.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Springbrough.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A daughter.
Awesome. What's your name?
Bella.
And what grade are you in?
First grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Springbrough.
And what do you want to be? That's okay. Got lots of time to think about it, right? Right, listen to the microphone. What's your name?
Morgan.
What grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hudson. Artist.
What's your name?
Katie.
Hi Katie, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Booth.
Mrs. Booth? What do you want to be when you grow up? Student.
Artist.
An artist? That's great, got a couple artists. Excellent. So you guys want to step up here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance? We'll face the flag, right? Ready, start whenever you're ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for everyone that came in tonight, really appreciate it, great job. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, we're gonna start off the month actually with the board member recognition month. So right off the bat with our three new board members, this is a time that we're going to recognize the Board of Education members. Board of Education members are a mature and tested institution in Ohio. School board members make policy, they approve contracts with employees, they choose curriculum, adopt budgets, select the superintendent and the treasurer who are charged with administering the district and district contracts. They do all these tasks with the emphasis on what's best for the children that they serve. Being an effective school board member is no easy task, particularly in today's climate of change and challenge. School board members need to be knowledgeable about many complex education and social issues and carry out initiatives and directives from both the federal and state level. To face these demands of our governing public schools, they give countless hours of their personal time. A public board of education is a legislative body of citizens elected locally by the communities. Most Ohio school boards consist of five or seven members who serve four-year terms of office. As co-partners with the General Assembly, which created boards of education, school board members are designated to carry out the constitutional mandate to administer the school district of each, the school system of each district. Through dedicated responsible endeavors, school board members serve the public interest in public education and they serve the needs of our kids. They ensure that the decisions about public schools are made as close needs of our community as possible. Their public service is an excellent example for the young and old alike of the tradition of volunteerism that is a hallmark of our American society. This January, local communities are invited to honor the contributions and dedications of their local school board members. Those locally elected citizens who make that decision that affect, influence, and direct the education of our youth. Our school board is just one of more than 700 boards across Ohio. Let's say thank you to those who participate and perhaps is one of the purest forms of grassroots democratic principles upon which our republic was founded. Our school board members do make a difference in our community for every child, every day. So thank you so much for being willing to become part of our board. Thank you to our current board members that have been participating. I've said this time and time again, until you're on a school board, you have no really concept sometimes of the amount of time that's spent just dedicated to this school district, to the school community. So thanks so much for what you are willing to do and thank you for the three people that have joined us that are willing to do this work, so it's a great thing that you're doing. Thank you.
We're gonna break into your report here.
I forgot to list student liaison, forgot.
We've got a student group here.
Are you ready, Mrs. Murray, or if you need more time, you can move on.
No, we're ready. Okay.
All right. Tonight, we've got from the elementary school, Mrs. Murray and some of her students. And they had the honor of being chosen to present at Capitol Conference in Columbus back in November. It's a conference for all school boards across the state. And so I asked her to bring along her students and show us what they presented to the state.
All right, so today I have four of my students. Only one of them did get to the Capitol Conference because we have some students who are absent. But they're all aware of what we do because they're in the room. So I have Cole Reenie, Zach Wer, Lilly Lewis, and Bala Phillips, who are here to present to you what we do.
My class loves to connect with classes all over the world. They play games like mystery Skype and mystery number. The game is played like 20 questions.
Okay, well, we're not getting sound, but this is a class that's actually from Australia. And because of our time difference being too great, we send out a question and they have to respond to us, they'll respond to us and then ask us a question and then we'll return it. So we return videos back and forth.
Everyone has a job. There are questioners, runners, responders, researchers, note takers, photography and clear. All jobs are important and help us solve the mystery.
And on the board, any of the pictures I'm using are pictures that the students have taken using our iPads. So during the time, you might see me standing around actually on maybe a device to help them out if we get stuck, but usually they run it all, so you can see pictures of them and performing the different jobs.
We play by taking turns asking the other class yes or no questions. The questions are clues to find the other class. We use a map to mark off the states or countries. We do not make a guess until we have only one possible answer.
We have Skyped with four continents, Europe, Australia, Antarctica, and North America. Three countries, Denmark, Victoria, Australia, and Ontario, Canada. In 15 states, we have learned about time, animals, weather, and other schools. Some schools are all girls, some wear uniforms, and some are summer break right now.
And this was another class, we actually Skyped with older kids. This is a class from Denmark, they were learning English, so we had to slow Skype them again because it's too much for them to keep up with translating it back and forth. So it's a lot easier just to bring out one question and then responding with another question. I'm not gonna go ahead and play the video because I don't think it'll get the sound.
We also play mystery number where each class picks a number and asks the other class questions to try and figure out the number. We use a number grid to help eliminate numbers.
We have read the same chapter book, the Year of Billy Miller. We met with a class from Alabama every weekend playing a game of Kahoot. We answered questions about the story we read.
A class in Canada has sent us a digital book about their town and we made one to send about Vermillion. Our town was very similar to Chatham, Canada. It had farms, a water tower, and houses like ours. It also touched Lake Erie.
We met with Jean Pennycook. She researched Adley Penguins. She was an intern at her. We learned that it takes her two weeks to get there. There is no heat in her tent or bathrooms. She does not shower for two weeks. She made a Penguin stand-up. She could talk to us, but we had to type our questions because we didn't have good connection.
And it wasn't so much our connection, it was really difficult. Once we started to talk to them, we kept dropping it, so it was a lot easier for us to just type in our questions and let her remain talking back to us.
So far, we have Skyped 30,092 miles and all. It has been fun, we have learned a lot.
And so Cole is our only member in the group who has actually gone to the Capitol Conference. You want to come up and if you want to look at the pictures and tell them a little bit about what we saw? The first picture, we were the youngest group in Columbus. And so we got voted right away when we walked in, the cutest table, which I think I'd have to agree. So we brought our stuff, as you can see, there's pictures on there, what we do a lot with creating portfolios, so the kids record the experiences. And then we have trigger pictures in the room, so they can go ahead and take an iPad, go up to the picture and that video of that student and their time shows up on that. So it's a big thing for them to get the picture on the wall. Our kids being the youngest were also the favorites because the older kids wanted to keep pulling them over to their booth and help them out. So Cole, what are you doing over there?
They had a fire station set up and they made it so you could shoot at the fire, but no water would come out and it would be electrical fire and you'd have to shoot it out.
And then we had several people stop by, especially the neighbors, Zinduski, Fireland all came and talked to our kids. Even a lot of our board members came and spoke to us. And the last thing, which I think was everybody's favorite, what are you playing on the other one?
We're playing with robots and battling.
So all in all, what do you think? Was it a good experience even though it was a long day?
Yeah.
It was a very long day for us. We left shortly before, shortly after school started and we were back until 5 o'clock. So it was a long day, but it was a good one, huh?
Yeah, I got to see them down there, they did a great job.
Thank you. It's pretty amazing when you come, they set up the whole room, they move all the desks, the chairs. Do you guys have a favorite job?
I do.
Okay, what's your favorite job?
My favorite job is being the questioner.
We don't switch it out, we learn to talk back and forth with another class. So our questioners will be up for the whole entire session, so that they learn to start it and end it. How about you, Zach, you want to say what your favorite part is?
Researcher.
Why? You always volunteer, but what do you do as a researcher?
I try to lower the countries and states down.
Right, he's the one that comes up with the questions. I don't give them a list of questions, so as they're marking them off on the map, they have to come up with the next question to ask. Lilly, you have a favorite?
My favorite is a note taker.
Why?
Because I get to type the questions that they see to us.
Bala, you have a favorite part? Not really? You like all of them? And then we have one student who does do the tweeting, so if you are interested in seeing who we are doing, our class has a site on Twitter. And we can be found at VESgrade2Smarties. So you can see their work there. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice students. I got to see the kids down at Capitol Conference also, they did a great job. And it was good to see a group from our district down there. So I'd like to challenge us to try and get somebody down there every year. Okay, Mr. Pepin, back to you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Reenie, who does our facility report. He's going to give us what probably will be our final report on facilities. Thank you, Mr. Reenie, for updating us and letting us know what's happening with the projects.
I brought my nephew this evening just because he was here, so I think he's already got more time than our new board members. He'll speak in a minute. My report is hopefully the final one because we're really close to the end. The elementary school, as you know, with most everything has been under warranty. Certainly, everything has been under warranty for one year, from February 6th is when the job was completed. So one of the things that's done before the year is up, we conduct what's called an 11-month walk-through with all the staff and certainly the custodian staff and made a list and found things that were to be covered under warranty. That list was created, compiled, and the contractors are all correcting those items. There will be a change order written for the final two punch list items. And then the contract would be able to receive its final payment. There were, if you remember, there were four liens on the project. Three of them have been released, so there's still one that remains for a little over $11,000. So Suzanne and myself and Phil met with the attorneys last week. It hasn't happened yet, but an email went out this evening and put the contractor on notice of the final item and so on. So I think all but that $11,000 will be released in the next few weeks. Then the field house in Phase 3, those punch list items have all been completed now. And that'll allow for that final payment to be released. And unfortunately, there was a lien on that project for $63,000 if you remember. So all of that money will be released with the exception of that $63,000 until that lien is finally written off. So that's basically where we're at.
Tim, when you guys did the 11-month walk-through, how extensive was the punch list?
Typical, again, it's not called a punch list, it's a warranty list, just to be distinguished from that. There were some items, some leaky faucets, some caulking, or excuse me, some, couple of window leaks, some grout pitch cracking. I didn't bring the list with me, but nothing, nothing huge out of the ordinary. Some doors that were sticking.
Nothing alarming.
Yeah, no, there really wasn't any, any big item. There's a shade that doesn't work up in the clear storey that's being fixed. The heating HVAC system has an extended warranty, but there were some items on that and they're being fixed as well.
The other question I had was with the window that broke in the field house, was that, I mean, I know we were using the wrong type of ball, right? We should have been using indoor ball, but replaced with the same type of glass? Or is there anything different we're doing?
You could use thicker glass if you're, if you're gonna play baseball in there. But of course, if you play baseball, the other windows are gonna break. It's probably best to play baseball in the batting cage or at least hit the balls in the batting cage. I mean, I saw those windows when they were put in. The, you know, I asked the question at the time, the guy, they threw a piece of glass out that was just the wrong size and he went up into the dumpster and hit that thing with a hammer as hard as he could and couldn't break it. I mean, a pretty three-pound match hammer. But then you take and hit it on the end of the glass, just right, just pick it just right and it shattered. So it's made, it's the same material as a basketball backboard is constructed on. You know, it's not, it's not quite as thick as the basketball backboard. It's same thing in a, in a racquetball court, you know, the backstop in a racquetball court has glass in it. So I mean, it's made to take it, but if something hits it just right, it can break. And the architect recommend, did recommend that baseballs not be played or hit into the window, hit or even thrown into the windows.
Just a little bit more information about that. Unfortunately, what happened in that particular situation was a regular baseball was being thrown. There are indoor baseballs that now are mandated that they're using and it's a softer core ball. But we have a solution, we believe, that should be inexpensive. And it would be just taking a hook and... And it would be just taking a hook and putting it into the back wall. And so the hook would protrude out from the back wall, almost similar to what this screen is above us or the smartboard above us. And then put a, a net that would drape down from that and then weight the net down at the bottom. So we're still not going to hit toward the windows. But in the event that a baseball, one of those softballs would get thrown toward that window, the net would, would break the impact of the ball. So that's a pretty inexpensive solution and I think it's relatively simple. And our operations director, Mr. Williamson, is working on pricing those out. And that should not be that expensive and I think a good solution.
So the person that threw the ball, we have them on our baseball team as a pitcher?
Yeah, they're, they're a major league prospect hopefully, so we'll see.
Thanks. Well, when all this started, all this construction and talk about this started, I don't know, it's probably been five, six, seven years ago, Mr. Pimpin' said, "Just one more thing." And that one more thing was building a new school. Well, Cole and his mom have just one more thing, so I'm going to let him read his stuff up there to the microphone and read your request.
Mr. Pimpin' and members of the board, my name is Cole Rini. I am in the second grade. Now that all of the construction projects are complete, let's build a swimming pool. I graduate in twenty twenty-five. Do you think we can do it before then? Thank you.
So that was one more thing and thank, thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
I'll, I'll speak to that idea. We've talked about that actually when we were looking at this project and we were looking at the building of the elementary school and the field house. And we had mentioned that at a previous board meeting at one point. One of the things that we talked about is it's not just building the pool, it's the maintenance of the pool afterwards. From what we understand about pools in general is that it's very expensive to continue to maintain. So besides having the plan to build it, you're going to have to come up with a way to sustain it. But it is a dream and I think it's a good dream because one of the things that we constantly hear about Vermillion is how is it that Vermillion with being in the location that we are at does not have a swimming pool or a swimming team? It's just logical that our community would have that as, as an extra. So I think it's a great dream and I think though that what we need to do, just like we said when we were going to go out and get naming rights and we got the weight room outfitted by Pat O'Brien, we're going to go out there and we're going to start asking for things like that because you don't know until you ask. And I know that Mr. Stoller and I are working on some, some naming rights and some other issues and, and we talked about that as a possibility. So I think it's a great dream and we shouldn't give up on it. I, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I would like to see that happen here in our community if we could because an indoor pool would definitely be an awesome opportunity for our community.
That'd be great.
Twenty twenty-six is not far away.
Tim, just, just to backtrack just a quick minute. For example, on that, those shades that got pulled down that were, are retractable in Vermillion Elementary School. So when this got put on the list and now we've noted that, does that extend the warranty past the twelve, twelve months? Because we noted that there was a problem.
No, the warranty only lasts twelve months, but anything that happens up until February the sixth will be fixed under warranty. And not unlike your car, if you have a, you know, a certain amount of time, of course, your car's on mileage. But if something breaks before that day, we have to call. You know, I mean, make your call on February fifth. But I mean, even if that doesn't get fixed by February sixth, it'll still be fixed.
So in other words though, there was a bad motor in the shade?
Right.
And they fix it now, but it breaks again February tenth. It's not covered because we noted it and it had to be fixed.
If that's the exact same motor and there's a situation like that, I mean, we'd certainly call the contractor and do everything we could to get it fixed under warranty. I mean, there's probably nothing binding into that, but, but I mean, these guys have all been in business a long time. I don't, none of them are in a run.
So it's not a hard and fast date and it'll depend, it'll be on a situation by situation basis.
Yeah, I mean, something like that, a unique situation. But if something, if a different shade breaks on February the tenth, unfortunately, the warranty's up. And it wouldn't be covered, yeah.
Have we had just one go bad?
So far, right.
How often are the shades used? Is something used daily or just when it's?
I've been in there. I mean, when the sun comes through.
They're used pretty often because as the sun comes in and it's pretty, it needs to be covered up at times and it's actually too much light and too hot. They'll use them, so.
And it could be something as simple as loose wire or, I mean, I mean, chances are it's probably something like that.
How about that new issue that came up in the Vermillion Elementary School with the wicking of the kitchen floor? Was that a solution found to that or not?
No, we haven't met about that yet.
So that still is going to take place?
It's been noted yet. We'll go through there.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on with the superintendent's report. I'm going to skip around just a little bit here. I'm going to skip over the renewal levy and save that for last. So we've got two things that are on the, on my report. One is the administrator's compensation policy. And I'm going to read the recommended action now. A resolution to adopt revised compensation policies for administrators and supervisors, whereas the Board of Education has determined to revise the method of picking up employee retirement contributions for supervisors and administrators and to alter their compensation format from a salary range to a salary schedule. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby revises and approves and adopts Board Policies fifty-one, twenty-one as attached to this resolution as exhibit one. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby revises, approves and adopts Board Policies fifteen, twenty-two as attached to this resolution as exhibit two. Be it further resolved that the administration is directed to revise the administrator handbook and the supervisor's handbook to reflect Board Policies fifty, fifteen, twenty-one and fifteen, twenty-two as revised in exhibits one and two attached to this resolution and to reflect the respective parts of the salary schedules as revised by Resolution number one, fourteen point fifteen, adopted by the board November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll move.
One second.
Okay, I, I believe that the board had a chance, the outgoing board really was more instrumental in looking at this. So I know that this was something that the new board was just asked to look at, but it was mostly something that the outgoing board was involved with. And so just as a, as a comment, that's really.
Anybody have any questions or discussion?
Okay, I'll go ahead with the next one and it's the same situation with that as well.
We have to, I don't know, so we need to call all of that?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Okay, the next subject is exempt administrative assistant compensation plan. And this is a resolution to adopt a compensation plan for exempt administrative assistants, whereas the Board of Education has determined to revise the compensation format for classified secretaries or administrative assistants who are excluded from the O P C Local Three Thirty-two Collective Bargaining Unit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby approves and adopts the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year salary schedule for classified employees excluded from the O P C Local Three Thirty-two Collective Bargaining Unit and the revisions to section twenty-three. Compensation policies, secretarial employees of the secretary's handbook as attached to this resolution as exhibit one. Be it further resolved that the employee, the classified employees excluded from the O P C Local Three Thirty-two Collective Bargaining, Bargaining Unit shall be entitled to the same health insurance benefits or reimbursements as provided in that unit's collective bargaining, bargaining agreement as provided in section twenty, as revised in the secretary's handbook attached to this resolution as exhibit two. Be it further resolved that the administration is directed to revise secretary handbooks consistent with exhibits one and two attached to this resolution.
I would, I would think I'm going to abstain from voting since my wife works for the district and she's a secretary. Although she is not in the non-exempt, I just would like to check with legal and maybe the Ohio School Board and make sure there's no ethics problems.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haverhill?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Abstaining.
And Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Okay, the final section of my report tonight is the renewal levy. Reed Wakefield is the treasurer of our levy campaigns and has been for many years. And I was talking to Reed today and I think he's given a good suggestion. And what he's asked us to think about doing is to find an assistant treasurer. He's held the books for these number of years, but it's always good that someone knows what he's doing with those books. And so I'm going to put it out there tonight that any member of the board that might be interested to become the assistant treasurer to Reed would be definitely helpful to us. And so that's the first thing that I just wanted to bring up about this. There's a balance of approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars that will be used. As, as far as that money goes, that's, that's a totally separate independent account that is not connected with the school district in any way. And so those monies that are dedicated are for any levy or bond issues that come up on the district's behalf. So I'm not sure if anyone wants to step forward. You could just talk to me individually if you'd like or just email me or Suzanne and we'll get you in touch with Reed if anyone here on the board is interested or anyone from the audience for that matter that would like to think about taking over those duties. We'd like to put that out that we do need an assistant treasurer. Okay, the next thing that I wanted to talk about is one other detail about that treasurer's position too. I just want to remind the board that anything that goes out with printed material has to have the name of the treasurer on that printed material. So that will have Reed's name on there. So if you see any documents that go out in relation to this renewal levy that does not have his name on it, please bring it to our attention because that's a legal aspect of this that needs to be covered.
Does that include electronic media or?
Well, if, if it's considered printed material, it could be printed, yes. And, and there was a, there was a cost associated with it. I think that it, it needs to be considered then with his name on it. But there, and, and usually even if it's an email, then there was some sort of a device that used some printed material that would have to have his name on it. So yes, I, I would think that, I'm, I'm speculating that that's the way it would be, but I'm pretty sure that that would be the right answer for it. And it's probably better to be safe to have it on there than not. Okay, along the same lines of a, of the treasurer, I'm recommending to the board that we have a co-chair position this year. Sid Jordan in, was, the last time that we had a renewal levy was back in two thousand and eleven. So that's the last time we really have done anything in regards to this at all. And Sid Jordan, who was a board member and board president at one point, is very knowledgeable about the levy process. I've spoken to Sid and he's willing to be a co-chair, but he doesn't want to take it through the duration of this renewal levy. He's willing to work with another board member or work with another chair. He doesn't want to be the chair of the committee, but he'll be a great resource for any of you that might want to consider taking this on. And I, I did speak to him and he is willing to do it. So we're looking for a chair of this committee and I'll certainly work with you. Traditionally, the superintendent is not the face of the, of, of the levy, but I am there to assist and I am there to work with you. And it's usually something though that is board-driven and along with the possibility though of it being a co-chair type position. So Sid is going to be a great resource for anyone that wants to do that. Okay, I provided you, and I think Suzanne did as well, there were two separate documents that went out to you in the weekend review that were the dues and junks of, of a levy campaign. So hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. But it, really the main point of, of the document that was sent to you is that we can distribute factual information about the levy as long as the information that we give is unbiased and doesn't suggest or encourage support that is for or against the levy. So for example, when we're talking tonight, you know, this is just a factual recount of what the levy is for. We can say, for example, and I gave you those five or six talking points, we can say that it's a five, five-year renewal, renewal levy. One thing that I did say that probably on your part would, would cause you to give a little bit more explanation, explanation was the point that says no new taxes. Well, to explain that further, basically we'd be saying that this is not any thing that's going to be levied on the taxpayer as additional. It's, it's not an operating levy. It's a renewal levy in the passage of something that they currently have within their current tax base. The millage has already been voted upon in the past. And when I gave you the, the history of it, this, this renewal levy that they will be voting on this March fifteenth is actually, it started back in two thousand and two and then it was passed again in two thousand and six. And then actually in two thousand and eleven, we combined those two levies together. But what we're emphasizing in these points is that this is not anything new. This is a renewal of, of a levy that's been passed before. And one thing though that has to be stated as fact is that this is a, is a generation of approximately four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a sizable amount of money. And if this is not renewed, you can imagine the ramifications that that would have to this community and to this school district. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the community knows that we're not asking them to pass anything that's new money or a new tax levy. It's a renewal of something that's already in their taxes at this point. And we, we have to have this or there, there's going to have to be some changes that would be made as a result of, of not getting it. So we definitely have to emphasize that. And if you want to put it in another way, besides the four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's approximately nineteen percent of our total operating budget of twenty-two million. So those are the main facts that I've given you in a, in a set of six things that if the community comes to you and asks you questions, hopefully those, those things were helpful and you can refer back to them if anyone comes to you in the community. One of the things that we will be doing is putting any factual information that we can out on our Vermillion Nation News site that's on the website. So we'll be giving this factual information as much as we can to the community all the way up to leading, leading up to that time that we come to the levy vote in March. One of the things that we do also is we, for example, in this last Vermillion Photo Journal, I put out a, a school zone news article and just talk about some of the things that are going on within the community. And we thank the Photo Journal for, for publishing that. And for example, the title of the last article was "One Last Thing, Idea Fulfilled." And it listed all of the positive things that are going on within the schools. So we're going to make sure that we're getting out to the community and letting them know what the positive things are that are happening in the schools. And that's not really necessarily connected to the levy. That's just something that we're going to continue to do and make sure that the community knows that we're an integral part of what's going on within this community and want to give as much positive information as we can through that Vermillion News Network and the connection to Facebook, the connection to Twitter. and the connection to Facebook, the connection to Twitter, the articles that go out in the newspaper, just telling about the positive things that are happening. But these positive things would not be able to continue and all of the services that we offer would not be able to continue if we don't have that renewal. So, that's a fact. And that was an example of what they talked about within that article that I handed out to you was that you have to be able to tell the facts and the fact is that we need to pass that renewal. Any questions about the renewal, any concerns? As I said, we do need a, a Chair. Sid Jordan is willing to work with that, so if you could come to me and tell me if any of you are interested in that. And I'll work integrally with you on, on that effort as well. And most of the time though, that would be an after-work type activity, a separate committee that would have to be formed, that we would work together to, to get those things out. I know that that budget that we have that slated, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, one of the things that I'm sure that we will do. And that's not a whole lot of money, but I did price out some signs and we'll use that money that would be towards some yard signs and just let people know that we need to have this school supported because without that four million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it, it would have a huge impact.
Alright, so, unless anybody wants to jump up right now and volunteer, I'll, I'll talk to the Board members and we'll get you-
Great.
We'll get it filmed.
Okay, in the meantime, we'll be working in the evenings in behind the scenes to, to get that done and get things organized. Great. Okay, that's all I had in my superintendent's report at the C E M.
Treasurer's report?
A resolution to approve the following donations. Number one, five hundred dollars to State Away Bank and Michael Sanderson Memorial Fund through the Erie County Community Foundation. Number two, two hundred and fifty dollars to the V H S debate team from the Vermillion Lions Club. And number three, a hundred and ninety dollars to Vermillion Elementary School purchase one of quotes for student from Vermillion United Church of Christ.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? It's always great to get donations, so we really appreciate it. Call roll.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
A resolution to approve payment of the following. Number one, arbitrator Robert G. Stein for arbitration regarding Guaneland Howe, three thousand one hundred and sixteen forty-six to be paid from the general fund. Number two, North Shore, it should be bowling league, for bowling team conference fees, four thousand eighty to be paid from athletic fund. Number three, Sims Club for coffee bar supplies, five thousand five seventy-eight sixty-six to be paid from the street service fund. And number four, Michael, Michael Vigilia, the line-up football uniform, seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the season would be paid from athletic fund.
I'll second.
I'd like to clarify on number three, I was talking to Mr. Pemba today. Number three, the Sims Club for coffee bar supplies. If you'll remember last fall, we were having a discussion of Mr. De, no, of Mr. DeRais, entrepreneurial class, wanted to start a coffee bar. We had concerns about how that would affect federal dollars coming in for free reduced lunch. We had looked into that and found out that if we run it through the cafeteria, that we are okay on that. The Board last fall approved to loan the class five thousand dollars to get started for startup costs. It was not just given out of the general fund, it was something that was intended to have them pay us back and as soon as they get up and running and profits made, that will begin, is that true?
That's correct, right. The expectation is, just as you said, it's a loan and part of doing business and it's, it's an entrepreneurial class and so they should not be expected to just be given the money without having to pay it back. So that's gonna be part of their learning experience is that they need to pay that loan off.
Just a question on the bowling team conference fees. Does that go toward paying fees at, at the bowling alleys or?
It's a league fee, I, it, it's not just specifically for that purpose, but I think it's an overall fee that is charged by the entire league that I think goes towards deferring some of the costs for, for the trophies and for things that are, are not just, it, it's an overall fee for the entire league. I think the entire league then uses it as a, as a basis to award the kids and to also pay and defer some of the costs for the, for the facilities as well.
Do we pay individual, like, do we pay other conference fees for other individual sports?
That's kind of unique, bowling is one of the most unique ones and, no, that, that's, that's unique to bowl.
Just curious. Call roll.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public participation. If anybody would like to speak, feel free to step up to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live. Anyone? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda, excuse me, means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer or the superintendent request that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items for the consent agenda are as follows. Approve the minutes of the December eighth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting as attached. Approve appointment of Walter Zach Dolick to fill the unexpired term of Douglas Brown on the Ritter Public Library Board of Trustees. Approve settlement and agreement, settlement agreement and release between O P C Local Three Thirty Two, Guaneland Howe and the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education as attached. Approve disposal of inventory as noted on the attached list. Approve electronic, electronic data processing disaster recover plan as attached. Approve school sponsorship platform agreement with home team marketing for two thousand sixteen through two thousand eighteen as attached. Fundraisers, the V H S Wrestling Camp, January fourth and February twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Vermillion Challenge Sale of Bottled Water at the Winter Dance, January thirty, two thousand sixteen. Employment actions, resignation of Evelyn Haas Cafeteria effective April one, two thousand sixteen. One-year student worker contract for the two thousand fifteen sixteen contract year to Brianna McLean as part of the Work Experience and Career Exploration Program. One-year classified contract from the two thousand fifteen sixteen contract year to the following. Leslie Colissar, Educational Aid S M S Level One, eleven ninety per hour effective January four, two thousand sixteen. Drew Leonard, Mechanic, Level One, nineteen sixteen per hour, effective December twenty-two, two thousand fifteen. One-year additional duties contract for the fifteen sixteen contract year to the following. And Brett Dawson, Mohican Overnight Class Trip Advisor, Level Zero, Step Zero, two, two hundred and forty-five dollars. One-year supplemental contracts for the two thousand fifteen sixteen contract year to the following. Pending completion of background check, verification of current pupil activity certificates. Jessica Dixon, Assistant Softball Coach, Level Fifteen, Step Zero, twenty-six hundred and thirteen dollars. Dana, I'm not even gonna try. Steve, how do you pronounce it?
Fegedelum.
Fegedelum. Assistant Softball Coach, Level Fifteen, Step Zero, twenty-six hundred and thirteen dollars. Terry Toms, Assistant Softball Coach, Level Fifteen, Step Zero, twenty-eight fifty-eight, I'm sorry, step, it was, step zero. A lot of extra numbers there, isn't it? Looks like Level Fifteen, Step Three. And Amber Bailey, Assistant Basketball Cheerleading Advisor, Level Seven, Step Zero, thirteen oh seven. I'll move.
I'll second.
I'd like to pull the sponsorship platform agreement with home team marketing. And I think we have an updated agreement that, I don't know if we got sent that today, have not had time to look it over properly, so I think that more time is needed before we're able to agree to that.
Okay, remove that from the consent agenda, please. Anyone else have anything they'd like removed or? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes. Okay, so the home team item, do you wanna discuss now or table or?
We table to the next meeting if that's possible, so we have time to look over the information.
Any issues with that?
No, not at all. Agreement that you get, and it was just resolved this afternoon, is much more favorable in the conditions and it just, it gives more exemptions to some of the things that we can do in the future and it does not limit us in any way. So, if you can read it over and look at the original versus the one that you're beginning now and you can see some of the changes that are more in our favor. We were very pleased and our Board Attorney did get a chance to take a look at it and is very pleased with the fact that we were able to get a lot of the things that we negotiated for and we believe are in the, in our favor as a school district.
Okay, great. I, I was gonna, I had questions about it myself. Okay, next item is future meetings. The tentative future meetings are regular meeting on February eighth, regular meeting March fourteenth and regular meeting April eleventh. Those are the next three upcoming meetings. Anyone have any issues with any of those dates?
I'd like to propose that we add a work session in a couple weeks, sometime in January just since we have so many new members and things like we have on the agenda tonight that are kind of old business carrying through, so we have time to discuss and explain and-
So, I know, I saw your email, I know you've had a chance to go to the O S B A sponsored workshop, right?
And, yeah.
Sarah, when are you going?
May third, twenty-fourth.
Okay, so maybe we should wait till after that or?
It's not, I just think prior to the next meeting, maybe we can, sometime prior to February eighth, if we could fit in a work session.
Alright, so let's pick up.
If, if you wanna email me some of the things that you might want to discuss at that time and then I can send out in the Weekend Review some information about some of the things that we can discuss. There, there might be some comments or something that can get us more prep for that time, so if you all wanna send me things that-
Do you wanna do an evening, Saturday morning work session, what works best for schedules?
Either.
The first of them, the evening, not it.
I think I'm working for Saturday, it's such a long-
Okay, so.
Is that basketball?
I don't think there's any basketball on Monday, so it's good.
The twenty-fifth.
Monday, the twenty-fifth, seven o'clock? Okay, can you add that, please, Sam? Yes, please. Do we have to meet or?
We could put it on the next agenda, I don't know, that'll be, we don't have to do it. No, it's just, it's just-
So we'll schedule one for January twenty-fifth at seven P M, work session.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.